Thursday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Bellyham Planning Board. Jim, the first item, although it's listed here as last, is we want to talk about the A and R plan for Suzanne Lane. Some people would like to move that forward on the agenda. So can you bring us up to speed on that?
Certainly. So we have an application as from the last meeting, fifty-nine Susan Lane A and R application. It's confirmed that both the owners have signed off on this application. I don't know if the if the applicant is present this evening.
The applicant is present, Mr. Franco.
Okay, and so I did speak with the building commissioner earlier this evening. He has no problems with the submission. It provides adequate access. My recommendation would be for the board to execute the A and R.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, please. I'd make a motion to to sign the approval not required plan as submitted.
They're moved. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the signing of the A and R. It has been seconded. All in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed? I'm standing. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to move on to continue public hearing for Locust Street. Jim, do we need to read any announcements in regards to at this this meeting via Zoom?
No, so as as the board knows and the public knows at this point, the meetings have been moved to remote for the time being. The board is reviewing the, you know, the current stance of of the environment to each and every meeting at this point. Sorry, one second. Let's go ahead and Roberto, if you could please. Thank you. So as everyone knows, we're currently remote. The board has taken the position to review whether or not to continue remote as as we progress along and as you know, new things happen in the world each and every day. But as we are under the governor's executive order to continue through at least the early April, the board has the opportunity to do this remote if possible. So this evening will be remote. And it's my understanding that next meeting in January will also be remote and we'll be reviewing at that point whether or not February will continue remote or if we'll be back in person. Obviously, the board, you know, has done quite a bit to try and be in person as much as possible.
So for those people joining us via Zoom, I want to thank them. I appreciate the residents coming out. We'll do our best to navigate through this over the next several weeks. But I think it's prudent that we meet via Zoom for the time being. So we have a continued public hearing on fifty Locust Street, the special residential use townhouse dwellings. Jim, can you bring us up to speed on that?
Certainly. Yeah, so I believe the applicant is here and can certainly bring you up to speed on on his side of things from the last meeting. At the board's request, the applicant and has set up through myself, set up a meeting with many of the abutters to discuss this this project and and how maybe they could improve the project. At that time also, they DP they have met with DPW on a few other outstanding items. And lastly, the peer review did come back just recently with a few other items that were necessary regarding stormwater. But for the most part, and Frank is here that could certainly speak to it, but for the most part, the project has been buttoned up pretty well in terms of stormwater. I know they were before conservation last night, and there were some things that conservation liked to see tweaked. I'll give Mr. Almonte an opportunity to speak to that as well. But from our view of things, I think it's it's progressing.
So what I'd like to do now is have the applicant provide a brief update on the changes to the plans and the meeting he had with the neighbors.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So this is Jim Almonte from Land Design Collaborative. Good evening. So yes, we did meet with the abutters on November thirtieth at the golf course. We had a good meeting that night. We listened to a lot of the comments and concerns from the abutters. Tried to answer them the best we could. We did revise the plans to address some of those comments. We did add some some additional landscape screening along the parking lot. And also behind the clubhouse was a request of of one of the abutters. And I know there was a lot of questions and concerns about, you know, the Forest Main running down reservoir roads. We tried to answer those questions the best we could. We are working with Mr. Di Martino to button up those plans, provide him the information that he needs. So those those revisions to the plans will be forthcoming on the sewer route. So that's basically the summary from the from the meeting with the abutters. I can also talk about conservation if you'd like.
Can I just go back to the meeting with your butters?
Sure.
See if any of the members have any questions.
Yes, I have a question. My name is Steve Deacon. I live on Reservoir Drive. I'd like to know what's happening with the sidewalks. They're in terrible shape, and with any kind of construction, they're gonna be worse. And also, you have storm drains. Which one is at the bottom of my driveway? Okay, they're they have to dig them up. What are they gonna do about my driveway? And will I be able to get out or in?
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think you're opening it up to the board members. I know it's a little tricky right now. We'll certainly leave ample time for the public comments, and we'll definitely get to your questions, sir.
My question to the applicant is will you have an opportunity to provide written information to the residents on Reservoir Road as to not only the construction process, but hooking up how long it will take and somewhat of a calendar?
Again, sorry to keep interjecting here, but if I may. So, Mr. Chairman, after our last meeting, I did reach out to Don Di Martino, who provided a one pager about how to connect based on the sewer line that they're gonna be bringing through. Obviously, we wouldn't we are not we wouldn't hand hand these out now, but when time comes, if time comes, when the sewer line is coming down, DPW will certainly be going door to door handing those out if they want. If they want to, it's obviously an optional for each each resident whenever they see fit.
Any other board members have questions? Anyone from the public? Can you address your previous question, Jim?
Yeah, so I can I can start touching on it a little bit. So with Reservoir Drive, when and if sewer runs down there, it's required to have paved from curb to curb, including the requests include the asphalt burns on the edge. Drainage obviously will be included in that as with an overlay. They're gonna have to raise the drainage structures to the appropriate levels. I'm not I'm not sure exactly about at your driveway location, sir. But as that's being looked at, DPW certainly will be looking at each and every drainage structure and making sure that it's gonna be functioning properly and that this this entity will when they pave, there's inspections that's gonna be done to make sure that it's sloping correctly into each and everyone's drain. I don't know how it's doing it right now. Maybe it's not functioning properly at the moment. But that certainly will be done through the process. There will be inspections of the the private entity paving after they do the sewer. In terms of entering and exiting during the sewer time, you know, there's gonna be a construction management plan that's gonna be necessary, obviously leaving complete access to each and every residence at all times. You know, at some points, when they're right in front of your home, perhaps when they're providing you with a new paved road, they're gonna have to maybe have a detail out there to get you in and out. And then lastly, in terms of sidewalk, the applicant has provided sidewalk mitigation in terms of dollar amount. The locations haven't been decided yet. I think that's something, at least that the board has discussed to date. It would be a condition that the X dollar amount is provided. It certainly is up to the town and through the residents discussing with DPW and others as to which sidewalks get paved, and you certainly can make the argument for Reservoir Drive, if not other locations. And I could certainly, if the applicant wants to expand upon any of those answers.
I think you covered it pretty well, Jim. We're on the same page with that.
For the residents on Reservoir Road over here, part of the construction management program, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, is we're gonna do our best to limit dust. And the area will be wetted down. So people, there's not a lot of dust floating around, correct?
I mean, that would be part of the construction management plan.
Okay. So I'm sure the gentleman asked a question. I'm sure there'll be open dialogue between the applicant and the people doing the project. Any other members in the public have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, I do. My name is Bob Jolker. I live at eighty Lake Street. And my question is this. I spoke to the gentleman at the meeting, and when the sewer line crosses Lake Street, it's gonna take an abrupt right-hand turn for some reason, and then it's gonna angle off to wherever it goes. In looking at the project, if you look at it, a straight direct line through the center of reservoir takes it right to where they want to be in a cemetery. I just wondered if there was a valid reason why it had to take a hot jog. And another thing is, we got ahold of the diocese after many calls and found out who was in charge of it. And it said to them that that was the builder's request to take that jog. I was just wondering why.
I'll have the applicant answer that.
Sure, I can I can touch on that. So I did not personally have the negotiations with the with the diocese, but my understanding that was that that location of the sewer was at the request of the diocese because of their future plans for the plot layouts. So you know, obviously, we want to go the shortest route, but that that was my understanding, and it ties into one of the existing access drives within the cemetery. So I mean, that is that is the diocese property that's part of the cemetery. And again, that will be part of their future expansion.
But in looking at it, I don't know if you got to look at it yourself. The way they set up a cemetery, they have a main road with a lot of roads branching off. It would be more prudent to do it that way instead of crowding it towards the reservoir. You know what I mean? They get more access. It just doesn't make any sense the way it's going.
Right now, that jog is, excuse me, I'm Patricia Jolker. I live at eighty Lake Street. That jog is turning into an area that overlooks into our yard. There's bankins through my backyard, which that jog, that road, would give ample view of our backyard. There's not much room there at all. It's like they'd be walking through our yard, basically. Now, we've maintained that land for fifty years. And in fact, we just paid to have some trees taken down there. We're not looking to claim any land on this. We're looking to asking that they try to do a straight line in because we've had trouble with ATVs coming through our yard because of where the cemetery abuts us. It's a very odd formation of land. It's almost landlocked, except for the road that's going through, which is we understand that's the diocese's land, but to have to go make a curve towards our property, so anyone walking that as a walking path, which will be done, I'm sure, will be coming in basically towards our our yard, right into our swimming pool area. And the other thing is, is that the we've had more trouble over the years with ATVs riding on the paths. This is gonna be a smooth road. It's gonna be a raceway right through my yard, basically. And we would just like to see it go straight through instead of curving over into my backyard. And we can't seem to get that done. Now, I talked to Father Kelly of Precious Blood. He didn't see why it couldn't go in straight. At least, he sounded like he was curious as to why it wasn't going straight. He gave me the name of your lawyers. Apparently, he said that they were the ones that approved, worked with the diocese to to do this. So somewhere, somehow, someone could put this road or path straight in. I don't see what the difference is. I wish someone could come look at the way it is, because you'd see that it totally over. I mean, it's like we have a patch of land that we put a guard in there.
Thank you, Ms. Jolker. Thank you. Jim, would you be able to take a look at that one more time on the location and give a get a solid response as to why the bend, and if not, if there's any opportunities to pull it away?
Yep, I mean, I can look at it again. I know Steve Vinicasa was the one negotiating with with the diocese. And they wanted a certain distance off of the rear property for the people off of Janet Janet Ave. They wanted a certain distance, I think it was like three hundred and forty feet or something, off of the rear of their property to maximize the future layouts of the of the plots. And that's the reason why there is a bend in that in that the beginning of of the sewer, Forest Main, through that area. And it does line up. Once once that bend is complete, it runs parallel with the property line. The rear property line is off from the people off of Janet, and it ties into that existing access drive within the cemetery. So I know I know Mr. Vinicasa had, you know, many negotiations with with the diocese and took pretty much close to a year to get the deal done. So that's the plans that where we currently have are the results of all those negotiations. So I don't know if Mr. Vinicasa's on, if you can add to that or not, but that's my understanding.
So you're saying there's no possible chance of getting that a straight road in instead of curving it?
Ms. Jolker, I think we're gonna look into it, try to get memorialized, to find out what's going on, and to see if there are any opportunities. I think the applicant, Jim, can we have the applicant reach out to the Jolkers? If someone visits?
I talked to him at the previous, we talked to him about it at the previous meeting, and I felt I was shut down on it.
Well, we're gonna try to get them to, you know, come out and talk to you, man.
Okay, that would be great.
You know, beyond that, I can't, you know, I don't know what can happen. And then, you know, once we get can memorialize in writing what has happened and why it was happened, we can look at, you know, alternatives that may or may not exist.
I mean, I've tried, I've talked to Father Kelly, who was very nice about it. And he seemed like it didn't, he was curious as himself as to why it was. I talked to the cemetery manager, who abruptly told me it was their land and they could do that what they wanted with it, and I was trying to take their land away. I didn't appreciate his tone or his attitude. We're just trying to keep our privacy. And if Janet Avenue can have leeway, I think we could have a little bit. We've lived here for over fifty years. Maintain that land. I could take steps. I chose not to. But I mean, it's just a straight road, and that's all we're asking for. Just curve it back a little from our property. And I would like to meet with them. I would like them to come see it, because it's very odd formation of the properties.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps, you know, of course, we want the applicant to look at it and see what we can do, but perhaps there's just opportunity for the applicant to look at screening, some sort of screening might, I don't know.
I think, Phil, that's something we can probably discuss once we get a report back. I think that is an option we can look at as well as figuring a way to minimize ATV traffic in the area other than just calling the police.
Yeah.
The Jolkers, it's something we're gonna look into.
Okay, we'd appreciate like maybe a gate or some type of chain.
Well, what are the options that we have available?
Okay, I appreciate that.
I know, yeah, in all honesty, we'll see what's there. It could be rocks or boulders, you know. We'll talk to the applicant and see what options are available. If and when we determine that it can't be straightened out.
Okay.
And I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here. Let's just look, get some more detail, and and you'll see what we can do.
Okay, the the just one other thing, too. When they say they need, you know, they're doing it for future use. I will be long gone by the time they get to the background, my back of my house, and Father Kelly said it could be, you know, a hundred years before they get there with this with with using it. So just to put that in there, too.
Perspective, okay. I hope you're around for a very long time, Ms. Jolker.
I do, too, but, you know.
Be nice if, you know, you're around in, you know, fifty years to look at it.
Oh, I doubt it. Thank you very much, though.
Any other comments with regards to the Bongay Brook project from the public? I don't see any hands raised. Jim, what I like to do now is get into discussion the next steps here. And we have had discussions about conditions so far on this project, and I believe you've written them down. Can we look at the conditions applicable to this project? What any other boilerplate conditions we have for similar projects? And try to draft a condition form for this project that we can present at a future meeting?
Absolutely. So, you know, this has been a long ongoing hearing, you know, several months of a lot of discussion. I think it's certainly prudent and appropriate to start forming that list of conditions. So everyone's on the same page as to what what has been discussed, addressed, and will be, you know, conditioned moving forward. So I can certainly provide that list of conditions than any other of our normal, you know, best practice conditions as well, obviously. And things like, as the gentleman had mentioned about construction management and all that, we could certainly put our, you know, our conditions in there for all of that, and I could certainly have it ready for you at a subsequent meeting.
I also think we did rather robust conditions for the the Fafford project that was originally sold. So some of those may be applicable here. One thing I inadvertently skipped over is our peer reviewer here this evening for this project.
I am, Mr. Chairman. Frank DePietro from the VSC Group.
Anything else you want to add? Anything you missed?
No, a couple.
Reports have came in recently.
Sure. So this would be the report that's dated the twenty-seventh of December, the last one.
Yeah.
Most of the previous comments have been addressed. Not speaking for the conservation mission, but just report, there were a couple of the conditions that I think we've come to an agreement between the applicant and the commission on. These relate to the roof drains, also relate to some of the test pits that are gonna be undertaken. There was a condition that there was a comment I made regarding the calculation for the drainage system. Mr. Almonte was very appropriately prompt in sending me a set of the calculations this afternoon. I checked one or two. I'll look at all of them. They seem to be fine. There was a condition, or there was a comment or request for a couple of waivers from the planning board, one of which was related to fencing around the infiltration basins. Again, I have no comments other than the applicant noted that they would be cutting the grassy area, the lawn, or the meadow area a couple of times a year. I think that would be something that maybe the planning board might want to put in a condition.
And that's, we have discussed that. Thank you.
Other than that, that was pretty much it.
That one condition, being a risk manager, I had some reservations about. But based on the length of the golf course being there and what they proposed to do, I believe that is a viable way. Will you be available? I think we may want to move this to the first meeting in February. You'll be able to go through the updated site plans by then?
Sure. And I'd be very happy to do that.
Does the applicant have any other additional comments?
No, I don't think so at this point. We will move forward appropriately with, you know, some of the comments that we heard tonight, so.
Any comments from the board? If not, I would entertain a motion to have Jim draft conditions and also to have those conditions available after our February tenth meeting. Jim, do we need to extend any other dates?
I think we're okay at this moment, but Amy can certainly check into that and confirm what the applicant tries to our next meeting.
Do I have a second on the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have motion on the floor to have Jim draft on conditions for this project and also to have that document available on before February tenth at our next meeting to discuss this. That'll be our first meeting in February. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'm standing. That motion passes, you know.
Thank you.
To the people showing up, the Jolkers and others, I want to thank you very much for your input. Frank, I want to thank you as well.
Thank you.
Jim, the next item on the topic for the end of this evening is one fifty-two Depot Street Warehouse. Can you bring us up to speed on that?
Absolutely. So one fifty-two Depot Street, we have a number of things occurring since our last meeting. You know, through the holiday season, we've had three different peer reviews looking at this project. We have a sound study that has been reviewed by our sound study peer review engineer that's representing the board. We've had our Frank DePietro, our stormwater engineer, who's representing the board, evaluating all the stormwater calculations and the drainage system. And we've also had MDM, a traffic engineers vetting the numbers once more after our last meeting and some confusion. So we've we have all three of those that have been reviewed and vetted. Traffic did come in a little late, so, you know, obviously, I I think perhaps we hold off on that subsequent that meeting to a subsequent meeting. Sorry, that topic for a subsequent meeting. We do have stormwater that had come in recently. I don't know if the applicant has had time to vet it, but I know Frank can certainly provide you with an update and kind of an overall view of that. Our sound engineer is unable to attend this evening. He did provide a report. And I believe the applicant is present and can talk. And I believe the applicant is present and can talk about kind of the sound. Sources that we could, we could start to address and, and, and talk about over the big picture. So a lot has taken place since the last meeting, a lot of just kind of vetting the project. We don't have updated plan sets at this time as applicants is really getting into all those comments. But I'm sure the applicants here can provide you with some updates at this time.
Jim, who would like to start with, to give us an overview of where we are?
I think if we could start with the applicant, he might have, they might have some additional things. And then we could vet each and every one of those with our engineers.
I just want to let the audience know, these documents have come in somewhat recently, correct?
Yes.
Right, so yeah, each of us, you know, it's, our engineers are working hard and, you know, with the holidays and everything. Some of the schedules got a little tight, so yes, a lot of this information just came through. So, you know, obviously, the planning board, you guys are a very busy group. And I don't expect you to have an opportunity to fully vet this at this time. So I think a high level discussion starts laying the framework for a subsequent meeting that makes sense this evening.
Okay. Would the applicant like to provide an overview?
Sure, for the, for the record, John Cusick with Fuller Engineering. And they have Sean Kelly as, as well with Van Ass. And we have our sound consultant here as well, Mark Wallace. So I guess I'll speak briefly about each of the, the comment letters that were, that were received. So we received the stormwater review this afternoon from, from BSC. I've been able to take a quick review through it. And I don't, I don't want to speak for, for Frank, but based on my, my review. It seems like the, the comments that we've, we've got to address seem pretty straightforward and relatively minor. I don't see any, any issues with addressing what Frank has identified. And we can certainly incorporate that into a cleaned up set of plans off to everybody. If I have a follow-up question, I'll, I'll reach out to him directly, but it seemed pretty straightforward. And I didn't see any fatal flaws or, or issues that had been identified in his, in his findings. Similarly, with the, the sound study. Based, and again, I'm not an expert in the sound studies, why I have our consultant here. But based on the review of the, of the peer review of the sound study. It appeared as though everything was in order. I think they asked for some additional clarifications and some information that I can have our consultants prepare. And get that off to your consultants, but everything appeared to be addressable in that as well. And then finally, we received the peer review comments from, from MDM. Again, on the traffic, again, I believe from reading their, their comments. I think the majority of everything, the way I read it, had been, had been addressed. A couple of the, the questions that I think we're going to want to clarify from the, from the board. Is just relative to the mitigation. Again, as a, as a recap, the mitigation that has been discussed with, with the town was. We could provide a signal at the Depot Street Hartford intersection. Essentially just signalize the existing roadway as it really stands today to fix that existing condition. Or we could provide a contribution for a larger upgrade to that intersection. We're amenable to either, we just need some direction from, from the town as to which they would prefer we, we go in. And beyond that, we will be making one, one additional change to the site plan. It's pretty, I think it's a benefit that, that, that folks will, will like. I can present that to you to show you that the quick change that we'll be making when we, we submit the plans to Frank and his group and, and the board. But just based on some comments we've received at prior hearings and incorporating some comments that we've got. I think it's a good, a good plan change. And I can present that to the board to get your, your feedback on that, if I can share the screen.
And do you mind letting Mr. Cusick share the screen?
No, just wanted to preface that, you know, we have not seen this before.
Understood. Yeah, no, absolutely. I plan on making a full resubmital. As we talked early on in the process, we wanted to get all the peer review comments in, get everybody's consent. Then we'd submit a full set to you. But just in concept, I want to show you what we're doing because it's relevant to some of the comments that we've heard. And I think it was brought up in prior meetings.
I appreciate that.
You're all set. You're, you can share your screen now.
All right. Can everybody see that screen? Okay, so this is the site plan that we have been discussing and presenting all, all along. And the discussion was that the traffic pattern would flow in this direction. The loading operations and then out. Based on some of the conversations that we've heard and, and comments received. What we are going to be doing is essentially making the traffic pattern for, for trucks come in this way. Essentially with a turnaround here and back out this way. So all of the loading operations would be entirely behind the building and not circulating around here. This road would maintain just because the fire department will want full access around the building. But it would essentially be for fire access into access this section of the parking lot. That will then allow us to remove. This section of grading and clearing and whatnot. So this area in here can remain in its natural state and provide yet a larger buffer to what we previously provided. On the original submittal. So when we make that resubmission, that's something that we're going to incorporate, which I think is a pretty significant enhancement. So this is why I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. And I think certainly the, the butter down here that we were, were speaking to. Was looking for ways for additional buffering as well. And I think that's something that goes a long way towards that.
Okay. I appreciate that, that answers, I believe, one of the questions I have.
Yep. That was it. And we'll have detailed drawings showing that, but it's, everything else pretty much stays the same, short of the elimination of this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, any, any other items you want to bring up?
I mean, I think that's, that's really it. I, I know at the last meeting. We had presented the, the traffic and had gone through that, that full presentation. And within our original submittal, we had, again, you asked us to provide the, the higher generation traffic. Again, not what we at all anticipate generating, but you'd want to, you wanted to see what that might, what that might look like. Again, that was in what we submitted, but it was not in our last presentation. And at the last meeting, you asked us to present that to the board. We're prepared to do so if you would like to see that presentation.
Briefly. The reason I'm a little hesitant is I would like. An avenue in which that can be done in like a slide or PowerPoint. For the benefit of people in attendance, so it's easy for them to see. Can you watch out this evening?
Members of the board, Sean Kelly with Van Ass and Associates, trap engineers in the project. If it pleases the board, I can offer those numbers quickly. I do have it set up at a PowerPoint presentation, if I can just share.
You're all set. You can share.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Everyone sees this okay?
Yes.
Okay, so at the last meeting, you know, we gave an overview of the traffic impact assessment. We walked through the parameters of our study and what the findings were. And again, we had, you know, the study is based on the anticipated use, which is the general warehouse space. And we had done an analysis based on the trip generation that we expected for a typical warehouse building of this size. And as you may recall, the, the, the numbers in terms of peak hour trips were in the order of about fifty-one trips in the morning, about fifty-three trips in the evening. The great bulk of that activity, you know, quite frankly, is, is related to employees. It's auto, auto trips, not truck trips. During peak hours, we're looking at about, you know, two trucks coming and going in the morning and about three trucks coming and going in the evening. As part of our initial assessment, we were asked by the town to also look at what the impacts would be. If this were higher generating warehouse use, a high Q fulfillment center, as they call it, based on IT data. And we did present that analysis. It was part of our initial study. We walked through what the trip generation would be in the report. We did the analysis to demonstrate that traffic signal would still operate, you know, effectively at, at Hartford Avenue with the improvements. And also that the North Main Street intersection could accommodate the traffic, particularly with that northbound left turn lane. But we did not have a slide that showed the actual numbers, even though that wasn't the report. These are the numbers, and again, this is not, you know, what we're proposing to build. But if this were to be a, a high fulfillment, high Q fulfillment center. You know, you're looking at a higher trip generation both on a daily basis. You know, you're looking at six hundred and eighty vehicles coming and going. Again, the bulk, we're still employees, but you would have, you know, twenty trips, truck trips coming and going as well. And then during the peak hours, the volumes are higher, you know, you're looking at about a hundred and eighty-four trips in the morning and about two hundred and fifty-two trips in the evening. We did, we did run these analyses as part of our initial study. It was included. What it showed is that, you know, with those improvements in place, that these increases could still be accommodated. And certain driver would operate effectively. So we did have that information, but I know we didn't present it, you know, in terms of a slide at the last meeting. So this is, this is it in case anyone at the board or has any questions. I think that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, I have, I'll have a question, but I'll ask the board members.
Sure.
Have any questions first? Brian?
No, I have, I have no, no questions.
Liz?
I have no questions either.
Phil?
No questions at this point.
Is Robbie on yet? Okay, I do have some questions. Lord knows, I'm not a math major. I quickly look at these and the truck trips. I'm looking at peak hours for truck trips generating. Looks like two entering and exiting.
Correct.
Yeah, is that correct?
That's during the peak hour, right? So during the busiest hour of traffic in the morning, and that's typically in your, you know, eight to nine o'clock range. You would have two driving and two tractor trailers departing. And that, you know, that, that hour fluctuates depending on the quarter and maybe.
I understand. I appreciate that.
Sure.
I also see the same thing for a PMP college.
That's correct.
So if I extrapolate those numbers out, it looks like a couple of things could be occurring. You may have truck traffic on peak hours. Are you in agreement in substantial amount on peak hours?
What you, what you typically see with a project like this is that you, you know, it, it almost forms, you know, a spike kind of towards the midday. So you'll have, you may have, you know, four truck trips in the morning peak hour, four truck trips in the evening. So that's your, say, seven thirty to eight thirty, and your five to six. And then as you go throughout the day, you know, your nine to ten, your ten to eleven, you might see six truck trips, eight truck trips. You know, that's three coming, three going, four coming, four going. But it, but it typically, you know, rises up to the, maybe you have five coming, five going, you're in the busiest hour. And then it comes back down to that, you know, four as you get to the evening peak. And then, once you get beyond those, those peak time periods, you're essentially looking at, you know, one or two truck trips during the hours. Particularly during nighttime hours when, for the most of many.
That brings me to my point.
Sure.
I would like to look at the viability. Of eliminating as much as we can. Truck traffic from ten at night until, say, or in the morning, or five in the morning. I'm trying to accomplish two things. Looking out for the neighbors during those hours. And number two, trying to reduce any park in Depot Street. And as you showed how you knew plan. Traffic flow, truck flow works. I want to make sure you have enough area. So that early morning hours. Trucks will be off Depot Street. Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want trucks on Depot Street during the day parking.
No, we have no intention of having any parking or state or any activity of any sort occurring within Depot Street proper. I mean, I understand there may be other facilities along the corridor that do the site design or the layout of the parking configurations. Don't have the ability to store the trucks on site. But I think as John demonstrated, you know, this, this access is certainly a different animal. This is certainly enough loading docks to accommodate the truck activity we're projecting on a daily basis. They'll have the turnaround at the end of the driveway. So we don't expect to have any activity on Depot. They'll, they'll be entering the site and parking where they need to be within the confines of the property.
And reducing truck traffic from ten to, let's say, five, is that realistic? I'm not saying.
We, we can. Yeah, we could. We can certainly bring in a, they, they, you know, the IT, the data set that we utilize presents a, you know, temporal distribution of trucks trips during the day. And quite frankly, you know, these facilities really aren't busy in the evening hours. I mean, you may have one or two trucks, in many of the hours you have none. But we can certainly present a graph that shows you hour by hour what we expect. But certainly between the hours of ten PM and four AM, it is, you know, it's very minimal in terms of what you're going to see out there.
I, I realize that. I know you don't know who your tenant is. Or would like to express to future tenants, minimize truck traffic during the hour, ten to five, you know. At ten at night, five, or maybe nine to five. Because you're, you know, you're in a mix of residential and industrial. And we have to be aware that be a part of this residential. But other than that, I appreciate what you've done, the changes you made, and showed us this evening. And the, the high Q fulfillment trip generator that you gave us.
Sure.
Any other, any questions from the board?
Nope. Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, perhaps we could have Mark Wallace present just the, the appendix of the sound study that was completed.
I was just going to ask for that.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't want to jump ahead, but I think that's going to be very informative for the board. That's, that's kind of the third part of this, this presentation tonight, I believe. And, and while I was looking at the sound study, I think the appendix showing the sound sources was very informative. I don't know, Mark, if you have that available?
I do. Try to pull it up on the screen.
Back around, Mark?
So. Am I able to share or?
You are able to share.
Okay. So I believe this is the table you're talking about. These were.
Actually, Mark, if you could, I, I think this is going to be a lot of gibberish to the general public. The, the last, I think at the very end, you had a nice site plan with sound sources.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah, there you go. If you want to touch, talk to that one, that, I think that's.
Yeah. Absolutely. So. For the record, my name is Mark Wallace. I'm with Tech Environmental in Waltham, Massachusetts. And we were tasked with doing a sound study for this particular project. It's a two-phase approach, as, as I think the board is aware. We do a baseline sound monitoring program to establish ambient conditions. And then we follow that up with acoustic modeling of the various sound sources. This is a layover, an overlay of, excuse me. Of the proposed building, the white, the white box here is, is the building itself. And what we have done is we've added in receptor points representing the various homes that are surrounding the, the project. That include Depot Street, Hartford Avenue, and then even down further to the south, sixty-two Box Pond Road. So as part of our modeling analysis, we take into account all the sound sources that we believe will be operating with the warehouse. The first set of sound sources are rooftop equipment. So this is sort of highlighted here on, with the X-boxes. So this is sort of highlighted here on, with the X boxes or dash boxes on top of the building. The white building here. So these represent HVAC unit, rooftop air handling units and exhaust stands. The red, the red line indicates the truck traffic flow through, through the site. Now, obviously, we have learned, obviously recently, that this is going to change. But as, as for the purposes of this particular sound study, we assumed the trucks would be circulating around the building and then coming back out. But then we also included, because this is on the backside here, I don't know if you can see my cursor. This is where the loading dock area is, and we have a truck idling in this area as well as off to the, off to the left here, we also have a truck backup alarm that's as part of the, as part of the evaluation. So as, when we do this acoustic modeling, we're assuming all of these sound sources are operating at their maximum load and simultaneously with their maximum sound level. And so then what we do with this is then we project what the sound levels are going to be at each of the, each of the properties. And then we compare that to the ambient conditions for the mass D P noise policy evaluation. And then also to the Bellingham noise by law limits. Is, so if there's any questions from the, from the board, I'd be happy to take, take those.
Can you explain the, the results of your analysis?
Sure. So, as I mentioned, we had taken sound level measurements over a seven-day period. We set up a long-term meter on the property line to, you know, over extended period of time to capture the lowest ambient sound levels. And the focus here really is nighttime. And then we also followed that up with short-term measurements at three additional locations offsite to make sure that we're calibrating and capturing the lowest ambient conditions, not only at the site, but also at the, at the nearest residences. So based on that, our lowest nighttime sound level was thirty-four decibels that we measured. So the facility design goal for, for the various properties are based on either the mass D P noise policy or the Bellingham by law. And whichever one is more restrictive. So for the, for depot street, the design goal here is forty-four decibels. So that represents, you know, sort of a quiet suburban area that's, you know, that we're trying to achieve, make sure that we're not overly impacting the neighbors. And then the sound impacts from our sound sources that we had talked about previous, on that previous figure, we project those sound levels to be between, say, thirty-one and forty-two decibels. So, well, you know, based on our current sound study, we're in compliance both with the mass D P noise policy and the Bellingham by law. Now, the Bellingham by law, they're based on various zone, various zones. Zone A being residential, zone B being business, and zone C being industrial. So the Bellingham noise limits in some cases are, are higher depending on which zone you're in. So again, going back to what I was saying before, for depot street, you can see that the Bellingham limits are higher, but the more restrictive requirement is the mass D P noise policy, which is set at forty-four decibels. Because the ambient level that we measured here was thirty-four. Whereas on Hartford Street and at Box Pond Road, the background sound levels were higher than what we measured on depot street. So really, you know, so that the mass D P noise policy would allow you forty-eight to forty-nine, which is less restrictive in this case. So really what's governing here is the Bellingham noise by law limit of forty-five. So we want to make sure that we're comparing both to the policy as well as to the Bellingham noise limit and whichever one is more restrictive. So that was our sound study that we had performed. As mentioned, we had received peer review comments from Kevin Atachi Associates yesterday, I believe. And we prepared a response to those comments. And then we've had some additional feedback for clarification from, from the peer review consultant, which I think with the new plan that's being developed with traffic, I think that's going to resolve some of the issues, some of the questions that he has about some of the sound sources and their operations. He wanted to see a specific plan, which we'll be able to provide and show that to him. And then there's some other clarifications with, with regards to some of the sound levels for what we're assuming for the various pieces of equipment.
Thank you. Jim, I'd like to see if the board members have any questions. Brian?
I just have a couple of questions. With regard to the H V A systems and the noise that they generate, is there any advantages to be gained by locating them in a different location on the ground or screening them? And in your opinion, is that necessary or what would be gained by that?
Certainly, there are different approaches to reducing sound levels from rooftop equipment. As you mentioned, they could be relocated. Or they could be, we've, in the past, if, if necessary, we've had screening walls that have been designed to do that. In this case, the sound levels from the rooftop equipment is substantially lower than some of the other sound sources. So they're not the dominating sound source when it comes to our overall evaluation. I think we can show that here where the A track equipment, you know, not getting too technical. You can see that the totals energy or sound is eighty-nine decibels. The rooftop equipment is eighty-three. Whereas we have some of the other sound sources that are at ground level, obviously, truck traffic and backup alarms are much higher.
So keeping with the backup alarms, when we were out at the site for the site visit, the, the backup alarms for the trucks at the Dunkin' Donuts facility was quite noticeable. We were there early Saturday and it was very noticeable. I'm wondering what there is, what can be done to mitigate those sounds, not the Dunkin' Donuts generated sounds. I think that ship has sailed, but in terms of this facility, is there any additional steps that can be taken to mitigate particularly with regard to the butter at the far end of the site?
Well, I think one of the things, as, as you saw from the, the plan that, that John Husick had shown was the relocation of the truck traffic moving around the site. And then they're having a backup alarm on the, on that side of the building. That's what we assumed because that was the most conservative approach on that, on, I'll show it again over here is what we were assuming. There's some, there's some parking areas over in this area that we assume the truck backup activity. With the truck traffic now being relegated to the backside of the building, a lot of that activity is going to not be behind the building shielding. It's all active essentially as a wall to block that sound. And so when we go back to revisit this in our sound modeling analysis, we'll, we'll be able to evaluate that further.
Okay. Thank you.
Liz?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Phil?
No, I think Brian asked the question, you know, what could you do about the, the truck traffic in the idling? So that, that I was interested in that. So I'd like to see that.
I'm hoping to go up to the slides with the information on it. The results of your study. Thank you.
Yeah.
So what you've done here, they showed us the what you project the sound level impact would be. And how it relates to the goal of the design. Have you, and is there a way to capture the sound that is currently there? And how it changes the current sound?
So when we did our baseline sound study, so when we did our long-term sound monitoring, you know, at, at our location on the north property line, these were the measured ambient sound conditions for that one week period. So essentially, the sound measurements that we collected is the whole ambient sound, including the Dunkin' Donuts and other activities that are going on around, around the facility. Now, keep in mind that this is what we call the, what they call the L ninety sound level, which is the quietest ten percent of the time. That's, so what I'm getting at is that there are other sounds that you're hearing, like you were talking, like, like Mr. Salway was talking about, both backup alarms and that kind of thing. That information, you know, you, there could be higher, there would be higher sound levels related to that. But for the purposes of the mass D P noise policy evaluation, we look at the quietest ten percent of the, of an hour or six minutes. So these represent the quietest times. And so again, you can see where we based our, you know, our study based on the thirty-four that we measured on a Sunday morning between ten and four A M.
Does the opportunity exist to compare your projected noise levels with the noisiest times of the day?
Yes, we could do that. We haven't done that because, again, the, you know, the more restrictive approach would be to look at the nighttime activities, but we certainly.
I understand.
Yeah. But we could certainly.
For the neighbors, I'd like to look, look at that so they. Also, I think you might have missed maybe one thing. I'll get to that in a second. Brian brought up the backup alarms. And obviously, you don't know who the tenant is. I spoke to your initial attorney on this project in some detail about the advent of swish alarms for backing up that mutes the noise of the backup alarms, but still provides a safe environment for the trucking. When we determine who the tenant is, I'd like to see if we can, the viability of putting condition in that they look into the viability of having long-term delivery trucks use swish alarms when they're backing up. And constantly with that, you looked at the measuring of idling times. And I want to make sure we stay within the confines of the mass idling laws year round and especially during the winter. And the one thing I think that may be missing here, and we realized it from some of the concerns that neighbors said they heard, oh, I'm sorry, were concerned they couldn't hear on the Campinelli project was the hucking up of trailers. Can you capture that sound at all?
It, it's, it's not something that we've included in this particular study. It's because we were under the impression that there was really no areas where they're going to be doing hitching and unhitching of, of trailers. And that's certainly something that could be looked at if, if, if I'm, you know, if my assumption is incorrect, I, I will double check with the, with the client on that.
All right. Now, we don't know, we don't know who the, who we're using this building, so we can just assume that, that assumption may be incorrect. I'd rather, you know, show what that looks like now as you're down the road after, you know, this project is up and running. You know, Jim, unless people think it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I, I think it's, like you said, since we don't know the end user of this facility. And I, and I, I do think it would be reasonable to expect that there would be hitching and unhitching of the trailers. I think. So I, I think that would be a good use to understand what that might look like as well.
And as, and it's the baffling of the, we can't move the A C units. Perhaps putting back, you know, fencing up there to minimize that impact. As you've heard me say before, you know, we're in the middle of a neighborhood in an industrial area. And we're trying to look out for the residents as best we can. I appreciate all the work detail you've done so far and the ability to listen to our questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Jim, is anyone here tonight from our peer reviewers that want to add additional input?
Yeah, I think it might be good if Frank's available right now, just to touch on high level. I know you guys haven't had too much of an opportunity to review his responses, but any, you know, some high level outstanding issues or things that the applicant should be addressing.
So be happy to do that. Again, I think I would sort of agree with John from Boulder earlier. Our comments are relatively, I think, minor. The big picture is that they do address with the recharge most of a increased pavement area they're addressing, no increase offsite. Some minor items would be maybe some adjustments or additions to some of the details they're providing. The specifying H D P pipe. And just to make sure that it's a lot of trucks driving over, to make sure they're going to use the high sturdier H D P pipe, not the little cheap stuff. That there is a waiver request that they noted about putting catch base in the middle of some of the drive areas versus up against the end and having inlet. Again, I don't think that's a problem. The, some of the infiltration basins back up a little bit into the drainage system. So you typically look at having the water flow freely into the basin. We think they should just take a look at where that water backs in for a twenty-five-year storm. Now, what's going to happen? I think the pipe will be a little bit fuller, but it's not going to overtop out of the basins and things like that. And lastly, there's a small low point rate, just essentially if you are coming into the driveway, you'll be on the left. It's really on the sort of north easterly side of the driveway that appears to be an area where water could puddle, not from the site pavement, but from the, the grassed area or the permeable area. Just to check to see what happens in that area, will it ever overtop into the roadway from a twenty-five-year storm? Those are real, are relatively minor items. And again, I think they should be able to be easily addressed.
Yeah, and we, we looked at it as well. And again, didn't, didn't study it, but based on the first blush, we, we didn't see anything that, that was something that couldn't be addressed or something we couldn't have a conversation with, with Frank about to, to talk through. But everything seemed as a thorough, thorough review and, and good comments. And I think we can address all of them.
And, and the changes will reduce some of the on-site and privacy area and some of the drainage system as well.
Yeah, that's true.
Any other comments? Jim, I'd like to open it up to the.
I have a comment when one appropriate.
Sir, just a name and address, please.
Steve Goyette, fifty-eight, Box Pond Road. Am I good to go?
Mr. Goyette, the floor is yours. And thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year, by the way, everyone.
Thank you.
First, in an effort to try to educate myself after our last meeting about the whole planning board process, I did take the opportunity to read through all the information with regard to the planning board. And Jim was nice enough on a Saturday morning to review the whole process with myself, Holly, Darcy, and Billy. So we appreciate that. So to try to educate myself and hopefully represent those that are opposed to this and speak halfway intelligently. My understanding from when I read the mission statement of the roles and responsibilities of the planning board, and I say this not to tell you something. and I say this not to tell you something you don't already know, but more to to regurgitate my takeaway from it. But it says to visually to protect and enhance visual and environmental qualities of the town. And it mentions traffic, obviously, and community character, among other things. So what I do want to say is that I know I've been harping on this traffic thing and community character for a while. But this box that everyone talks about having to work with it, I it it seems to me that there is some subjectivity in that in terms of, you know, how you, you know, analyze the traffic and community character. And for example, if you're going to look at the community character of the town, one person might think warehouse adds to it, one might say it subtracts to it. You know, I say, and I know I represent not only hundreds now, but thousands of people in this town. When we say it takes away from the character as it relates to the traffic. I know we've done the they've done the analysis, I get it. But the real measure of, you know, what we're going to experience has been demonstrated by Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts. I find it personally hard to believe that a warehouse like this is going to create a couple of truck trips in the morning and a couple in the afternoon. I mean, or the evening. It makes no sense to me and with respect to the gentleman who did the analysis when he had mentioned that the incremental truck volume was going to be equivalent to the drop of a bucket. He lost me on that one, you know, you know, if that's the case, Best Buy and Dunkin' Donuts, you know, would have been a few drops in the bucket, and look what we're experiencing now. So and I'll say further that, you know, if this analysis says that it's a reasonable amount of traffic that is projected, well, what's reasonable along a two-mile stretch in Bellingham along Hartford Ave? You know, it can be, well, that amount of traffic can be completely unreasonable on Hartford Ave. But say on one forty and in Franklin with two lanes going in each direction, that same amount of traffic might be perfectly acceptable. We already know that we're handling unreasonable amounts of traffic already. So I say this, and I know I sound like a broken record, to add on top of that doesn't make any sense to us. And again, I'm speaking for a lot of people right now. You know, and the other thing I want to mention is that Mendon and Hope Dale are actually being approached for some warehouses as well. And those warehouses, and by the way, those towns are watching us closely as well because they're trying to stop this, you know, in their towns. And at the end of the day, the preferred traffic route by those warehouses that are being proposed in Hope Dale and Mendon are, you guess it, Hartford Ave. So on top of what we're dealing with now, on top of what's being projected, which I think is grossly underestimated, especially when we don't even know who the hell's coming in. And then you're going to add to what potentially could happen at Mendon and Hope Dale. It it doesn't, you know, it's just it's it's mass chaos, you know, once again. So my point is that, you know, this box that you guys have to work in, you know, I I do think there's some subjectivity there. And I also think that, you know, to me, the right thing to do is to stop this proliferation of warehouses coming into the town. I think I heard there was even another one being proposed in Bellingham. I think near Mechanic Street, I got to check on that. So you know, the worst case it's going to happen is if this gets denied, you're going to get what an aggravated developer that decides he wants to challenge us in court. To me, let them, let them challenge it in court. You know, the only way that, in my opinion, we can stop, you know, the ascent or a stop of precedence and stop proliferation of a warehouses coming into town is to challenge it. And in if we have to challenge this in court, so be it. Doesn't mean we might, you know, we might lose, but at some point, you know, we may win and we can stop, you know, this craziness that's going on with the warehouses. I understand that developers want to come in and and and, you know, make their money and and take an industrial piece of land and build on it. But we have have to also realize that, you know, this particular piece of property is in an area where a town can overdevelop an area based on the infrastructure that's available to accommodate it. And I think as it relates to Depot Street, you know, that we are exceeding the infrastructure to be able to reasonably deal with it. Now, I'm not saying that that traffic is like that twenty-four seven, but it's it's so bad in the morning and so bad in the afternoon, as I mentioned before, we've had people move out of town. Now, my, you know, their words were traffic tripled with the advent of a Best Buy warehouse. And then when Duncan came in, it became, you know, unbearable or vice versa. I don't know which one came in first. So, you know, my point is, you know, if if the board decides to deny this, which frankly, you know, thousands of us hope they do. You know, if it goes to court, let it go to court, challenge it, you know. And I and I just want to, you know, say this as well, we brought up the Holliston denial, I guess, a meeting or two ago, and it was brought up that that they're under different bylaws or rules or regulations. So, you know, their denial, you know, might have been based on something, you know, that they had every, you know, right to do. I will say I have their denial letter right here. And it does acknowledge the fact that it's industrial land, they checked all the boxes. But Holliston, what they did is that they said that it was going to adversely affect the community, the character of the community that they were trying to protect. And they wanted to reduce the burden that a warehouse like this would cause on the residents that were abutting it and in the path of the traffic that was created by it. So they took the step to say, you know what? If we're going to get sued, so be it. They're going to challenge it, you know, and they're going to take it to the finish line. So to me, it looked like they worked within that box, but they looked at the subjective information about community character and the impact of traffic and said, we're not going to do it. Now, who knows what the outcome is going to be? You know, they may lose, but the only way you can win is if you take it to the finish line. And just remember, Mendon and Hope Dale is going through the same process right now. And if this particular warehouse gets approved and Mendon and Hope Dale gets approved and Hartford Ave is going to be that conduit to them, we're screwed. I mean, I don't know what other way to put it. So I wanted to just give you my two cents on that. I don't have any comment on the 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 noise piece of this because frankly, it's out of my area expertise or understanding. And frankly, I, you know, I don't know, you know, it has a major impact or not. I do know that the traffic, in my opinion, and thousands of others in this town and the community character that's going to create and change the landscape of this town forever is dead set against this between the traffic and the community character. That should be enough to say, listen, you know, sorry, but you know, it's 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 too much for this town now. And with that, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Jim, I'd like to hold off, and we can comment once we have mother residents.
I think we have two hands up, Seabird. You're muted.
Thank you. Hi, guys. Bill Hebert, fifty-six Bucks Pond Road. No problem to follow up on what Steve was talking about this giant warehouse. I I forgot, how many bays, truck bays are going to be in that truck again? This is to John, I'm sure he knows offhand.
I don't have that offhand, but I can I can get that momentarily.
Okay. Because for a building this big, and now it's going to run twenty-four hours a day, there is no possible way that a building like that can run with just two trucks going a day. It's impossible. I I don't know where those numbers are coming from, but look at all the bays that I can see right here. I mean, we have a small print, so I can't really look how many there are there. But it this place is going to be nonstop. And from what I see for the cars, we're talking an additional thirteen hundred over that thirteen hundred and sixty-four car trips a day coming through here. So the roads here already can't take it. Are you guys going to be, other than whatever stoplight you're going to try to fix, that's not going to do anything? Are you guys going to be redoing the roads that we just actually had redone about a year ago? They already need to be redone. Are you guys going to be helping to pave that road or make it wider for these trucks to be able to easily get down? That's pretty much my question.
And John or Sean, do you mind providing some clarity in terms of total truck trips, please?
Sean, I think you're muted.
My apologies. I'm going to try to share again if I can. Let me see if I can. Is it possible to share a screen? So everyone see that? So with with respect to your question, and I apologize if there was some miscommunication. This this analysis that we did here for the high Q fulfillment center trip generation, that that's not what we're proposing at this facility. That that facility is really more employee. The traffic is more employee oriented, there's a higher number of employees that work there. You get much more trips during the morning and evening peak hours because you have much higher commuter flows as shown. The slide that I presented last hearing, this is what was in the bill, this is the standard warehouse building. And as you can see, on the course of a typical day, it's it's three hundred and eighty total trips, a hundred and ninety in, a hundred and ninety out. Basically, the breakdown is typically, you know, two thirds of the trips these facilities, a typical warehouse generates are employee trips, and then the remaining one third is truck trips. So for a facility such as this, you're looking at sixty-three trucks arriving and sixty-three trucks departing over the course of a twenty-four hour period. Again, the bulk of that traffic, I would guess it's probably over ninety percent of it occurs between, you know, seven A M. and five P M. And most of that is during the the late morning. And then the early afternoon is really where they where it spikes even towards noon. And then as you as you get past five in the afternoon, it tapers down. And then during the evening hours and early morning, it's much lower. But the the two numbers that I think you're referencing, and I apologize for causing confusion, that's the peak hour. So, you know, during the busiest commuter hour in the morning, seven thirty to eight thirty, you know, you'll see two trucks coming and two trucks going for a total of four. And then during the busiest evening peak hour, it's three to three. Again, as I tried to point out earlier, you know, during those midday hours, maybe it's, you know, ten A M., eleven A M., one in the afternoon, two in the afternoon. You might see, you know, eight truck trips, you know, four coming, four leaving. You might see ten truck trips, five coming, five going. And the distribution is is fairly even. So at either end of the court, you might see, you know, one or two, three, four truck trips. And that's kind of the level that you see throughout the day at the the termini of Depot Street. So we certainly aren't indicating, and if there was any confusion, again, on my part, I apologize. But but there certainly aren't more than two truck trips a day. If the facility of this size, you're looking at typically sixty-three in, sixty-three out, a hundred and twenty-six total. And again, that for the course of an entire twenty-four hour week there. I hope that that cleared up any confusion. And then with respect, I guess, just while I'm talking, with respect to the intersection of Hartford Avenue and Depot Street, I think quite frankly, you know, if even if this project didn't move forward, you know, that intersection is a level service F today. If you're trying to get off of Hartford, rather of Depot Street, you've been going northbound, particularly going southbound in the evening, that had in the morning, that left heavy left turn onto Hartford Avenue eastbound. If you've been out there, I'm sure you know, it's a level service F. You can't get off the corridor, the sightline is difficult, the vehicles move at a good clip, and it's it's difficult to make that move at a stop sign. So, you know, the analysis clearly shows, clearly demonstrates without any question that installing a traffic signal will make this better. It makes it better because when you want to get off of Depot Street, you don't have to, you know, look both ways at a stop sign and try to find a gap in traffic. You're going to get a green light. You're going to get to make a safe maneuver, it's going to be controlled, and it's it's a it's a better situation than you have today. You know, this that traffic light, you know, quite frankly, in the commitment that the developer has made is is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment, it's a quarter million dollars. The peak hour traffic that we're putting through that intersection amounts to about twenty-five trips an hour during both the morning, you know, and the peak hours. And that that equates to basically ten thousand dollars of mitigation, you know, per trip. I mean, I'll be frank, that level of mitigation per vehicle trip increases is probably about as high as I've seen. This is this is substantial mitigation for a project that adds, you know, a car every other minute to an intersection that's already failing and it brings that level of service up. So so certainly, we do recognize that there are, you know, operational constraints that exist today independent of this project, particularly at Hartford Avenue and Depot Street. If this project didn't move forward, that intersection will continue to operate a little service F. There'll continue to be delays for vehicles trying to get off of people, both northbound and southbound. And we feel given the the minor increase in terms of, you know, twenty-five trips, which equates to a boat of one to two percent increase in traffic is certainly offset by the substantial mitigation commitments relative to the installation of a traffic signal and or contribution of a significant mitigation package in terms of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to town. So again, just to recap, you know, it's not two trips. It's a hundred and twenty-six truck trips, sixty-three in, sixty-three out. And we have done a comprehensive mitigation plan to offset the effects of this project. I hope that answers the question.
So my question was more, okay. So again, you can't take something that's an F and add more vehicles to it and just put a light in, and it makes everything okay. It doesn't. If I don't know if anybody saw the video that was posted this morning on the Bellingham page there. But right outside the Depot Street, there was an eighteen-wheeler parked on one side, one on the other side. And the school bus, again, was trying to get by there while another car was coming on as we're all trying to get out of the road this morning. We already have that now. We've called the police a number of times. I got run off the road, called the cops. Now, they come there, no problem for that incident. But there's nobody there regulating this. If there's nobody there regulating this, it's just going to keep happening. If this is happening now, already still every day with just these two places, when we add more trucks, more cars coming to us, it's just it it's not going to make it better unless you're going to make it wider. If you're going to make it wider, now we're going to need a double car, I mean, a double lane road on each side. It's we already need it now, almost now. We can't push any more of this here. We really can't. I mean, where is it? Sixty-three, I mean, even sixty-three trucks adding here. It's just if you guys lived in this neighborhood right here and you had to deal with this every morning and every night with what we already have here. And you're saying that putting a light here is going to end all this and make it up to a B or whatever. It's not, it's going to take the F and make it worse. Now, the only thing a light's going to be doing up there is you're going to now know who ran the light. That's about it because people are still going to run the light. Everybody that's been here for years, people that are coming through here from Rhode Island, everybody's going to run that light just to get out to make it between these eighteen-wheelers that they need to try to sneak by because they creep out at three miles an hour on the road trying to get out, and they can't sneak out. So unless you're dealing with it, you don't understand how many are going to be there. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. I see Mr. Muldoon.
Hi. Jeff Muldoon here, two thirty Depot Street. So just listening and counting the trucks that have just driven by my house in the last forty minutes. We're at twelve trucks in the last forty minutes, so we're off-peak hours. And according to that, I thought I could be wrong because I'm not a traffic engineer. It was saying two, they were projecting two per per hour during off-peak hours. And the higher numbers were, you know, during the the their peak hours in the morning and so on and so forth. And I totally understand that, but I mean, we're already at ten plus, right? And it's off-peak hours. So we're adding, I don't, I I can't understand how we're going to have just that small amount. Further, I think that there the traffic engineer made a point about there being an unprecedented amount of number of money for mitigation. That's because they know that these roads are unable to handle the traffic that they're adding to it, and they're trying to sweeten the pot essentially and saying, look, we know we're we know the roads can't handle this, so we're going to help the town out by putting in these lights. And yeah, maybe these lights will help. But the other aspect of these lights will, I'm going to have an eighteen-wheeler basically idling outside of my house all day long as they're waiting for the light. Now, of course, they're not technically idling, right? Because they're waiting to continue on their on their drive. But this is going to be an eighteen wheeler literally in front of my house all day long. Because all the truck traffic now, all the vehicle traffic now, the significant amount of passenger vehicles that are going to be coming from the site. My 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 front yard is essentially going to be a parking lot. I don't understand how that is any good for anybody. And further, with regards to the Mendon and Hope Dale projects, I understand those aren't. I'm not sure how that works with you guys taking those into consideration. But maybe Mass D O T or somebody can get involved. But maybe Mass DOT or somebody can get involved in this because one of those warehouses is over 600,000 square feet. And I'd have to re reread all their data. But I mean, they're talking significant, you know, thousands of trucks a day essentially. And they're all coming, talking about coming right off of 495 down Harvard Street, you know, past Depot. And the Menden, the Menden place is literally right at the set of lights, right there at the Dunkin' Donuts. And then the other one is right, right next to the Hope Dale Airport. So all within like a mile of of my house. So Depot Hartford Street, not even talking about Depot Street, not even thinking about Depot Street at all. Hartford Street isn't, I don't understand how Hartford Street is gonna be able to handle that. And then I recall in a previous meeting, a traffic, one of the traffic engineers had had mentioned that there was no need to time or sync the lights. I don't know the exact terminology. From the lights that are further down right in in Menden there with the one that is potentially going to go in on the corner of Hartford and Depot, because there's enough separation. But if we're adding however many trucks from this project and then God knows how many from those other projects, it really turns into a perfect storm of just constant traffic. I'm just not really sure how we can take that into consideration. But I don't know how it's not relevant to the total landscape of Hartford Street all the way back really to Home Depot area. And that's all I really have. I mean, you know, I understand it's an industrial area and something may go in there at some point. Hopefully not this. And I'm not opposed to any industrial. I just don't think that this specific project is good for Depot Street, Hartford Street, and the town of Bellingham. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon, thank you very much.
Bill, can I ask a question picking up on what Mr. Muldoon just?
I just, Brian, I wanna see if anyone else. There's some public. Can you see any hands raised? Casey?
Hi, it's, I was just gonna say something. Sean has been really awesome with answering questions for me lately. But if Mr. Salisbury would like to go first, that's fine.
I'd like to have a public go first.
All right. So at the last meeting, I had been very confused as to where their numbers in table five are coming from, which were the percent increases in build versus no build scenarios at those intersections. And he was very nice to explain it to me over email recently. My family members who are far more math savvy than me that helped figure it out as well. So I just wanted to clarify that their numbers weren't wrong, but neither were mine. I was, but I keep getting like 40, like 35, 45% increase in traffic. How is this coming up? It's 20%. My numbers were total increase overall on Depot Street over a 24 hour period was gonna be a 20% increase, which lines up with the formulas that they used. And then that math savvy family member, thank you dad, pointed out that the Depot Street at Silverstein Way, which is listed as in the morning as being a 21% increase and in the evening as being a 16% increase in table five, really does represent only half of the traffic. And as the study is saying, half goes south, half goes north, which means that my math of it being a 40% increase in traffic was not wrong because it was 40% for the entire road, not 40% for half the road. So I just wanted to let you guys know that Sean was nice enough to get back to me on all of that and contact me a couple of times because I am a terrible correspondent. And answer those questions and definitely better explain stuff and see where things were coming from. So I do appreciate him taking the time to call me when I he didn't immediately hear back from me. And to clarify to the board that, you know, neither of us were wrong, which is always good to know. I did math right. So yeah, there is definitely, I feel, gonna be substantial substantial increase across the board on Depot Street itself. Those one and 2% increases in traffic included all of that traffic that was just on Hartford Ave. And not the stuff that was going by my house. I will say during Friday's storm last week, shoveling the end of my driveway, I think we were out there at about four o'clock. Not nearly as much vehicle traffic because everyone had the day off. But I probably had, we were at, I was at the end of the driveway for probably about half hour. Probably had to stop and get out of the way to make sure, just for safety, I always like step back about five feet from the end of my driveway, make eye contact with the truck drivers so that everyone knows what's going on. But you know, there was a point where I had five trucks go by in a row. Not all Dunkin', not all plow trucks that actually that was all truck trailer trucks. So it's definitely, I think it's gonna be an impact, an increase in traffic and it's gonna be a noticeable increase in traffic over the course of the day and specifically during those peak morning hours. I haven't had a chance to go back. And now that I understand where those numbers came from, kind of apply that to other parts of the day. So those afternoon hours when it's supposed to be all the busiest time, how much is it gonna really change? But I look forward to doing that. I've mentioned a couple of times, I'm kind of a stats nerd. So I'm gonna have fun with that. That was it. Oh, and as regards to the sound study, this is more of a fun thing. I was trying to better understand it. If anyone is looking, National Park Service has a page that really does a great job of explaining how sound and sound studies are done. And no offense, you guys should really up your descriptions because theirs are way cooler. I would much rather know that 20 decibels is the sound of leaves rustling at Canyonlands National Park or that 40 dba is a cricket to five meters than a comparison to chainsaws. That's all. Thank you.
Casey, thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Brian?
My question was about what Mr. Muldoon's comments regarding the
Excuse me for one second. I need to step away.
The future growth of the occurring outside of the town and if that was part of the the study for the trap, the traffic study.
Yeah, we when we do our studies, what we typically do is we did in this case, we get we contact the planning department, identify projects in the area that are expected to generate traffic, you know, in the immediate vicinity of the site. And you know, this is since there were, there was quite a bit of development down on Mechanic Street. You know, you had some residential development, there's more warehouse development. And we looked at the traffic studies that we've done for those projects, we incorporated them, you know, into the analysis. With when whenever we do these studies, we always want to be conservative. So what we do is we apply a general background for growth rate. When we take the points and we increase them by a certain amount each year, which accounts for anything that's, you know, unforeseen or maybe in surrounding communities that while it would have an impact, be a lesser impact than than this municipality. So so we do it both ways. You know, we've conservatively concluded all traffic explicitly that with any project in town approximate to here. And then we've also bumped the volumes up to account for both the traffic for anything else that might be happening, you know, outside the immediate area.
So I guess my question was though was was in regard to the specific projects that Mr. Muldoon referenced. I think there's very large 600 square foot facility in Menden. Was that included?
No, I guess if it wasn't clear, no, the projects that we were based on the projects in town that are expected to influence volumes. I mean, then maybe the the there could be products amended, they're gonna add to the the background growth and we account for that with a growth rate. But we didn't, you know, we don't typically trace projects out into, you know, other areas of other communities that aren't gonna be specifically impacting this area. I know I can't imagine that a like the Menden will be adding, you know, traffic to Depot Street explicitly. They may add some traffic onto Hartford. But but again, we have bumped those volumes up to account for growth.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Let's see, I have some Lexi.
Lexi, the table's yours.
Can't hear you. Sorry.
Alexa, turn off. Can we unmute Lexi?
I believe she might be having a hard time with her mic. Just maybe give her one second. Sometimes it's the mute key on the keyboard.
If I may, she said she's muted in the in her settings in the in the chat. Lexi's Lex, she said I'm using this thing.
Can come back to her if you like.
Anyone else have their hand raised?
Can I just make one last comment? I'll be super fast, I promise. I I understand the traffic engineer's statement about not looking at other towns, but I feel like these are, you know, literally right over the border out of Bellingham. They're they they have to be relevant. Cause they will increase all the traffic right around this area, Hartford and so on and so forth. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Bill, while we're waiting, I I would add to that that while while Sean may have not have incorporated those specifically into this project, I would certainly think that Menden and Hope Dale should be considering, you know, the traffic volumes on Hartford Avenue and Bellingham as they're gonna be impacting ours, our road. So they they certainly should be considering each other as well as those those developments here in Bellingham, since they're gonna have to go through here if that's their projected route.
Jim and Brian, especially Jim, the gentleman has spoken first about talking, operating within the the box. Jim, can you address those comments? Cause I don't think we may have a different perception about the box should operate within.
Sure. And I will note Lexi also is available once I'm done, if you like. So yes.
Mike for her comments?
Sure.
Lexi?
Hi, sorry about that, guys.
That's fine.
I'm Lexi. I live at 24 Hartford, I'm right on the train tracks. So I just wanted to ask, I haven't been able to attend the previous meetings. But I was just wondering, the train has been one running once a week. I don't know if the public knows about this. So you guys are aware as well. I'm not fully sure what the plan is with that. But it has been running once a week on Mondays. So I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration with this traffic study or the thought of the light at that intersection and how that would work.
Thank you for bringing that up. Like I say, I think that train's been running for a long time, once a once a week, correct?
For a while, but they not, they weren't running it until they renovated the the tracks and they fixed up the tracks and dug up the road. Now they have been consistently.
Okay. I I I was at least aware of that. I don't know in consideration in the traffic study.
Well, I think certainly to the extent that, you know, we're looking at the, you know, putting the traffic, so there would have to be an evaluation as to what measures we needed to to accommodate the the train tracks. You know, typically they, I'm guessing that there are gates there that stop traffic today, but they maybe need to incorporate that to the signal itself. With respect to operations, you know, if the train comes through, as you're saying, you know, once a day on Monday, you know, certainly during those periods that that it crosses the street, you know, traffic's gonna be stopped. But again, you know, it's a if it's a once a week phenomenon, it I'm sure it goes through and then it clears and the traffic goes through at any train crossing. It's not something we would need to specifically design around. It's simply, you know, there will be instances that that if it infrequently does cross, traffic gets stopped on Depot and we'll get stopped on Hartford Avenue and it would have to, you know, adhere to the rules of not, you know, stopping when the train goes through. But it but in terms of the operations, no, one, you know, one, one train a week on a Monday isn't gonna change any of the findings of our study or any of our recommendations as it relates to to access or mitigation.
Okay, thank you. That that addresses my question. I was just more wanted to let the public know of that as well. And I'm not sure at this point what the plans are with that in the future, if that does increase or not. But obviously I have concerns in general for the traffic increase and the truck increase. So just wanted to put that out there. But thank you.
Lexi, one thing I should let you know, you indicated you weren't at all the meetings. I believe on one of the initial meetings, Don DiMartino, there's a document where he indicated that they plan early in fiscal year 2022 to regrade the area of Depot Street surrounding the railroad tracks to lessen the noise on the base and the contours of that road. So we hope that will be done early in this fiscal, you know, calendar year, excuse me, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah. So in in terms of, you know, others, maybe the board has discussed about the box that you guys reside within in terms of making a decision. You know, I did have the privilege of speaking with several of the the neighbors a few weeks back about this. And really what what that boils down to is, you know, there's a strict, there's strict guidelines and bylaws that are in place that this, you know, you as a board have to be mindful of and take into consideration. And going down that checklist essentially is that box that you do live in in terms of what you're reviewing. There's other things that you would love to consider, but unfortunately, you know, that's just simply not within the purview of the board. So that's that's the general kind of gray box that that the board is living in. However, you know, I think you guys are being certainly careful and considerate of each and every aspect of this project to date. I mean, this has been several months in the making and we still have a little ways to go before any kind of decisions rendered. So I mean, yes, there has been discussions of being settled in this box. But really what we're talking about is living by the laws of of the town and adhering and and doing as elected officials.
And can you, Jim, articulate the process when it becomes litigated?
Well, okay. So well, so there's the permitting process here locally. And so what that's what we're, what's before you now. You know, you're looking through a development plan and a special permit criteria. That decision gets rendered, whether that's a favorable or a denial. And no matter what direction that goes, there is an appeal process or pre appeal period, excuse me. That's a 30 day appeal period after that decision has been rendered and executed, so signed by the board. And during those 30 days, and a and a butter or someone with standing can appeal a decision. Or if it's denied, say, an applicant can appeal a decision. An applicant can appeal an approval too. We've seen that as well. And so that next step is it goes to the appropriate next level, many times for the planning board, that is land court. And land court, that's when essentially rises to the state level of the judges reviewing and determining whether or not the planning board has has rendered a decision within, again, that kind of box that we have been discussing. And so, you know, that that's never, that's not always a a process that 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 we go through. A lot of times, decisions are rendered and and those are constructed, as everyone knows. I mean, there's a lot of developments around town and around the region. So those would be the processes. And then let's just, so if it does go to, say, an appeal and it comes back, the options are the court agrees with who the decision, the court doesn't agree with the decision and makes their own ruling. Or a lot of times what we see is it comes back to the town to work out an agreement. So there are a lot of different options at play and a lot of paths that any project could take. Right now, we're still at the local level and and moving through and the board is doing their due diligence.
So Brian, anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, the people here, we, you know, this board, as you can tell, we've been very transparent in all the projects we deal with. We work within that box. We look out for the town and their neighbors. We've held this applicant to as best we can. I like the neighbors were disappointed that it was articulated to be at the beginning. There would not be 24 hours and that now it is. That's something we'll take. That's something we'll take in consideration as we move forward. But again, this is a process we're, we're going through and I want to thank the neighbors and the townspeople for their input. So what I'd like to do now, I think, Jim, it's best that we continue this to a future meeting.
Yeah, I would recommend based on the amount of work that needs to be done. I don't think the next meeting would be appropriate. Perhaps February 10th would be an appropriate continuation date.
Okay. And I would think that's going to give us a pretty full meeting on the 10th, correct? So I want to entertain a motion to continue this to the first meeting in February, which is February 10th.
So.
Do I?
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to move 152 Depot Street Warehouse to February 10th. I should have all the documents reviewed.
Pardon me. Sorry about that, Bill. What was that?
Of all the documents updated, review and peer reviews updated.
Right. Yeah. We should have a good updated plan set and peer reviews back well, well in time for you guys for review.
And I would hope that the applicant will take into consideration the comments made by the residents this evening. So with that, I would ask all in favor of continuing this to February 10th, please signify by saying aye.
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 That motion passed, I'm sorry, opposed. That motion passes unanimously. Again, to the public, I want to thank you very much. The applicant or peer reviews, again, I want to thank you very much as well. And I wish you all a happy new year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, we have one more thing this evening, actually a couple of things. The next major issue, you gave us an overview of 164 Mechanic Street.
Absolutely. So 164 Mechanic Street is a new project that's before you this evening. 164 Mechanic Street is a site plan review. So this is something that the board doesn't get to do too much of. This is not, doesn't rise to the level or thresholds of a development plan. So it's just under the thresholds for development plan, but is creating a new development on the site of 164 Mechanic Street. And, and so the building commissioner and I have had an opportunity to review the site plan with the applicant. I believe the applicant is here this evening. The property owner, Matt Clark, I see is present. And I believe John Cocker is present as well. And so before you is a development for landscaping, a landscape and garden center at this location, 164 Mechanic Street. Most of the board members are probably very familiar with this site. It's right next to the new intersection that's being, are being developed on Mechanic Street. It's the old little, it's a little white house that was, used to be there that I think many of us took a sidewalk to at one point. And so for our review this evening, the applicant has a plan to, to review and vet. Again, as a site plan review, the deliverable here is a letter to the building inspector with some certain conditions that the board has, would request of the applicant. Things for health, safety, welfare, things like reviewing parking, circulation, lighting, safety. Those sort of things that we can make sure that are done properly and for the best interest of the community. You know, certainly this is a prominent site. So making sure that aesthetically, well, it's a landscape center. So hopefully they should be able to provide you with a nice frontage and opportunity to, to make that, that quarter look nice.
Jim, before we turn the floor over to Matt and John transparent, I should let you know that John Coker has been servicing, providing landscape services to my property for a couple of years now. So just very transparent. Of course, there's an exchange of cash for services rendered. John and Matthew, the floor is yours.
Okay, great. My name's Matthew Clark. I'm the manager of TMC Holdings and Development LLC, which owns 164 Mechanic Street, the property that Jim Cuffer had recently mentioned. We have with us also the owner of Bellingham Nursery, John Cocker. John, you're on mute. Want to just say hello quickly? Okay. Maybe he's listening. Maybe he's not. I can, oh, there he is.
They figure it out now?
Yeah.
I can hear you, John.
How are you?
Hi, thank you.
Okay, great. So I'll run through real quick the, the project summary. John's company, Bellingham Nursery, Inc., currently operates a landscape nursery and garden center in the south end of Bellingham at 745 South Main Street. John, how long you been operating that business there?
We've been there since 2016 and it was actually opened in 2011.
Yeah. And historically that location's been a London Garden Nursery type.
It's been prior to that.
Yeah. So John recognizes the opportunity with the, the front edge and the prominence of this site. And I think he's had some challenges with that location in South Bellingham with regard to the abutters. It's kind of a spot zoning there, I think, for that, what you're doing. And John's dad operates the business adjacent to this parcel, directly adjacent and Tron Engineering, where John also has a landscape operation for his, this contracting business. So the proposed project is a 2.7 acre parcel of land, which we know is formerly the, the White House or the Brown Residence. That property has been leveled to the, the street level. It abuts the roadway that enters the currently proposed Trimark USA Warehouse. That's also known as the Lincoln Properties Warehouse Operation. John's operation is pretty minimal as far as construction and impact to the area. He's proposing four 150 plus or minus square foot prefabricated sheds, which house the operations of the business. Which, let me see here, yeah. Which includes the sales kiosk, display center, bathroom facilities for the, for the employees and the office for the, the Bellingham Nursery. In addition to the four 150 square foot sheds, approximately 1600 square feet of paved parking area will be established. A unpaved retail storage yard, which will have, where all the plantings for clients will be situated. And storage bins for bulk storage of landscape materials, which include aggregate and mulch, I assume some loom and stuff like that. Anything else, John?
I think that pretty much covered everything.
Okay, great. The, the 1600 square feet will include nine parking spaces. Over 95% of the gravel lot will remain impervious in stormwater runoff, which however minimal, will be managed in accordance with the stormwater operation maintenance plan, which is provided with the submission. The landscape laid on yard for retail display will occupy the southeast corner of the yard. The smaller storage bins, there are 10 of them, measuring 18 wide by 18 deep, will be situated on the eastern side of the property. And four large mulch storage bins will be at the rear of the property or the northern end. Hours of operation during the week are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. And we expect certain variations due to holidays and other prevailing conditions. It is somewhat of a seasonal business. Bellingham Nursery employs one full-time employee and four seasonal workers depending on the seasonal demand. See here, anything other more relevant here? We recognize that the traffic on Route 140 is a bit untenable at times, especially leaving the town in the mornings and then entering back into the town for the commuter traffic at the end of the day. Most of the business that Bellingham Nursery expects is off peak hours. We have not done a traffic study, but based on the general sense of the business that currently exists in South Bellingham, they expect one to, two trips per hour during the weekday for small to medium, you know, contractor type vehicles. And then one trip per hour for contractor trucks and one delivery truck per day. Like a, could be as much as a tractor trailer for mulcher loom or something like that. On the weekends, those trips only increase about 20%. Again, that's a function of seasonality. Chances are there'll be a little bit more traffic in the spring when things, you know, when the spring season starts and then, and then the fall when the, when things and, you know, wind down. The entrance to the property exists currently directly onto Route 140. We are in discussions with the folks at Lincoln and Trimark to gain access to the access road that, or the main entrance to the Trimark facility as a means of egress and access to this site. They provided a favorable response initially and have been a bit unresponsive since, but I am working with the building inspector to see if we can't get that thing over the goal line to create more favorable egress and ingress to the site. But currently the access is off of the existing curb cut onto Route 140. It's notable that, that curb cut serviced the property, which had a bit of a commercial use. They ran an electrical operation out of there for many years. So it, there's a precedence there where, you know, it's an existing by right access. And we'll look to Jim Cuffer to try to help navigate the, the easement with Trimark as, as time goes on here. As far as screening and, you know, the visual of this, this property, we expect that by nature of the operation, they provide ornamental plantings, trees, et cetera. In general, that, that stuff will be at the front of the property and will be natural screening in addition to the landscape features that are proposed on the, the attached plan. Building lot coverage is less than 1% and the total impervious coverage is relatively insignificant at approximately two, two and a half percent. Utilities usage are minimal. Existing water connection is one inch. There's no major water demand and nor a major sewer demand. So we, we really don't expect any impact to the, the utilities of the town. They're relatively de minimis. Permitting requirements for the site, other than the site plan review would include transfer the current retail sales license at 745 South Main to this location and transfer the existing bulk storage permit at South, 745 South Main. And John, do you have a bulk storage permit at the adjacent parcel as well?
We do have one next door as well, yes.
Okay, great. And then of course, any standard building permits for structures signage, et cetera. So in general, there really no new impacts proposed to the utilities to the town, nor do we expect any significant or even notable traffic impacts to the town. Clearly that would substantially less traffic impact if we propose some kind of warehouse or, you know, significant structure on the property. Think I've covered everything here? Any questions?
Anyone from the board have any questions?
Billy, I have one.
Certainly.
Hello?
Hello?
This is Dennis, Mr. Chairman. I have a question.
Floor is yours, Dennis.
Do you plan on fencing this in at any time?
We do plan on fencing where the agri soil or the aggregate bin will not be as I don't like that hill there. And we want to make sure nobody can fall down the hill in particular, but it will be fenced in for security purposes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Bill, if I could.
Absolutely.
Were you jacking to me?
Yes, of course.
Oh, thank you. Will the layout and operations be similar to the, to the operations and layout at your current facility?
Yes, essentially we're just picking one up and moving it to the next place. It'll be all the same products, all the same bins. It'll be less spread out than it is at the other site.
So the, the retail component of it would be the here, the flowers are all laid out, the down rows and different, all of that stuff is sort of what you intend to do here?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a component that people can pick up bulk storage items, mulch and, and things like that. Is that, does that currently, go ahead.
So right now we have, I don't know if you know our property at 745, but on the left sand, left-hand side of the building is our primary display area. And then down to the right is the mulch bins, the stone, the loom, the things like that. It'll essentially be the same exact thing, just more centrally located in more in one piece versus spread out.
Okay. If, if I could suggest some things and you've, I'm sure you've already thought of this, but if there's any way of screening the aggregate piles of materials that people would pick up or putting, locating them in such a way that it's not necessarily visible. I think we have a lot of that in town and to the extent that you could do something to to the best of your ability to, to shield that, that I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, definitely.
And then with regard to the nine parking spaces, I, I do, do you feel like that would be adequate, given that, you know, that, that it is a seasonal business? I agree completely with that, but you know, Saturday morning at the beginning of spring, you know, I, I suspect that there would be a lot of people at, at your facility and, and some of the other existing facilities that offer the same services in town. You know, the parking is odd and there's people, you know, kind of parking here and there and, and moving around with materials. Do you, do you feel nine spaces is enough for the peak? That you might.
I think it would be sufficient for the retail side of things because the majority of like the bulk materials and things like that, the vehicles will actually be out back. So the nine spaces are really just a handicap spot and for the people that are browsing the plants, the trees, things like that.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Imagine if you don't mind pulling up the plan to share, just so everyone takes a quick peek at it.
Sure. Now, if I click on share screen, it says it's disabled.
I think the man can allow you.
Yep, you should be good now.
Let's see what comes up here. All right. Select a window. All right. Can you see it now?
We can.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Is that?
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, this is Phil. Um, so is there going to be an office area or you know, I see the prefab wooden sheds. Are those for sale or are those for office inside area type stuff?
One of them is a checkout kiosk. One is a display shed. One will be a bathroom facility and then one is, we call it the back office.
Okay, so one.
That helps with the operations then. Okay, that, that I can understand it now then. Thank you.
Liz?
My only question is about the bulk storage. Will there be a limit to how high the piles can get on this site, which I think is something other operators in town that we've dealt with. So I'm just curious about that. other operators in town that we've dealt with. So I'm just curious about that.
So on our side of things, the mulch bins that we have currently on South Main Street will be the exact same. They're only six feet tall.
Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions. And I think one of them relates to access to a main entrance into the industrial park. That will be done, number one, to facilitate vehicle traffic, but also make it easier for your deliveries to be accomplished, correct?
Correct.
And the return radius will be there, and the lights will be there.
Correct.
So Matt, I, I think that's, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a a huge issue, but I think that would make your, your job on this property a lot easier. If we can get that done.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, we, we drew it in with anticipation of favorable response. I think it's just a matter of TriMark is in the midst of building out their facility. This probably, can't speak for them, probably not their biggest concern. But we're, we have contact with them, and we're just trying to gently push.
Yeah, if there was a reservation, it would be, we have to set up times for delivery for the, you know, large semi-tractor trailers of mulch. But if that can be accomplished, we won't have to do that. That's my only question. The screening. This is a long-term piece?
Yes, it, it currently is, if I recall, five years, and all indications are Mr. Cocker's here to stay for a long time.
Okay.
He's a young fellow.
Yep. No one seems a little boy. Any other comments? Jim?
Now, the only, the only thing I would ask, a little specificity for the fence on the top of the slope there, Mr. Cocker had mentioned adding a fence along the edge there, which I think is smart. It's a pretty steep slope there. Did the board or did Mr. Cocker have a specific fence in mind? Or were we thinking split rail fence? Were you thinking privacy fence? What were we thinking?
My thoughts were just like a four-foot chain link that way there. People could still see the product behind it, but it's safe at the same time.
Okay, if the board's fine with that, the only thing I would ask is it be a black chain link fence? We, that's something that we've been kind of pushing throughout sites.
A little less noticeable that way.
Yep. And, and the only other thing was lighting. If, do, is there any lighting on sites? What are, with your hours of operation, do you think it's necessary?
There is none currently, but we will be adding it. It won't really be used during operating hours, but again, that's a safety and security thing at night to have something lighting the place up.
All right. And I guess the, the butter is your dad, so if he has a problem with it, he'll call you about the lighting.
I'm sure he will.
Okay.
I think he'll call either, he may walk.
I think he'll just go with the light switch off.
He may be getting some, some washout lighting from that TriMark road. Might be helpful, because they do have some, some poles along there, don't they? Just checking here.
It does light it up a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That's, that's all the comments have. Thank you.
And now, just for history purposes, the road, the Utaqua for TriMark, is, you know, road that's named after the woman in the White House?
Well, I don't know. It's na, there's a name. I didn't know there's a name.
I think that's, Bill, I think that's the main road going through. That's
Okay.
That's what they're shooting for.
Okay. I just thought that was interesting when we're negotiating. So at this point, I entertain a motion to drop the letter to the building department in regards to this, with a favorable viewpoint and any conditions that we've discussed tonight.
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This motion, Florida, draft a favorable decision, excuse me, to the building commissioner, outlining the conditions. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. John and Matt, you very much for coming.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Continue your business in Bellingham.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Could we just take a break for one minute, two minutes? While we're reading the minutes, one of the meetings, I need to step away.
Hey, Jim, while we, while we're waiting for Bill, logistically, do you need people to sign that A and R?
Hi, hi, Brian. It's Amy. What the plan, what the plan I thought we could do, if this works for you guys, is I'll have the A and R tomorrow morning in the conference room down at the bottom of the town hall. And what I'll do is I'll leave the A and R there along with all of the papers that you need for the meeting on the 27th. And I'll have everybody's name on it, and then I'll have, you know, separate, Bill had suggested separate pens for everybody on their packets to sign the Mylar, if that worked for you guys. I can have that out tomorrow. If you guys want to stop by.
I don't know if I can stop by tomorrow.
Would Tuesday work?
Yeah, Tuesday would be good, because I'm kind of, I'm technically in and out of the office, so tomorrow I won't be home.
Tuesday, Tuesday can work, you know, whatever. That's, yeah. That would be fine. Does that work for everybody?
Tomorrow and Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. And then just
happening on Monday.
Just take your packets for the 27th, because it's just, it would be easier that way, and that way you have them, and you can review the paperwork. And I'll also leave the release of covenant that you'll probably be acting on tonight as well. So there'll be the Mylar and the release of covenant.
But Amy, what time does, will all that be there tomorrow?
Um, I'm in at eight, so I'll probably have it down there right at 8:30 or 8:15. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you come in the back door?
Yeah, that's right.
Our exposure?
Yes.
Anyone? We have minutes that are invited to us. Have we had a chance to record those minutes?
Yeah, Phil had a few. He had two changes, and those were incorporated and were in the Dropbox.
Okay.
I'll move to accept the minutes drafted.
Second.
I'd like to do it each. So we're talking about December 9. Motion of the Florida, accept the minutes, what changes from the Thursday, December 9, 2021 meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'm standing. That motion passes unanimously. I want to thank you all very much. It's been a long night.
Oh, Bill, we got one more thing.
Yes, Jim.
We got one more administrative item for you. The release of covenant for, so in your package, you have a Form G certificate of release. This one is for Beechwood Road. This is actually Lot 7B, so 30 Beechwood Road. This is an old subdivision. In doing some title research, it appeared that this lot was never formally released. We looked back at the records. Everything was completed for the subdivision according to the building inspector. And so the recommendation is both to release this lot, and so the actual would be for the board to sign the Form G. They would later get, they being the property owner would get it recorded formally with the registry of deeds, and then that would be formally released so that they could build upon.
So they're, they're going to be building on this?
Right. It's a, it's an old subdivision, single-family lots. This was the, one of the last ones in the subdivision there.
Just to, they're well aware that we were not part of the decision when this was done, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, this is a, this is a very old subdivision.
Okay. Like they have a motion to sign the release, the certificate of release for Lot 7B, 30 Beechwood Road in Bellingham.
The move.
Second.
Motion of the floor to sign, and I'm sorry, approve a certificate release. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Brian, the floor is yours.
Good night, Bellingham.
Now, we need to make a motion to adjourn.
Ah. I messed it up. I moved to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm up. Amy, great job tonight. Great job preparing for the meeting.
Thanks, Jim.